I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council. Tonight, I only have one announcement. I was, myself and council member Eileen Moller, were lucky enough to host about seventy-five students in council chambers for a mock council session last Friday, and it was probably some of the most fun I've had as mayor. We, they had elected a mayor and six council members, and we had some light agenda items that we had prepared for them, everything from our tree policy to where a fifty-foot Paw Patrol statue would go to a hopscotch ordinance, and we kind of touched on everything, but I want to say thank you to Sustainability Coordinator John Howard. He fielded about nine million questions on trees, and he did a phenomenal job, but I'd also like to say thank you to the Bluffview students that were part of the council. We had a mayor Amelia Neal, council members were Sean Yonkey, Virginia Seert, Laura Lee McCon, Will Shanson, Liam Dunbar, and Clara Lohmeyer, and that's all I have for this evening. City manager, do you have anything this evening?
Mayor and council, no comments tonight, thanks.
Very good. I will now ask city clerk to take roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilman Young.
Here.
Moller.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Ayden. Borzakowski.
Here.
Rapinski.
Here.
Under the petitions, requests, and communications.
For the remainder of this meeting, the public is not allowed to speak unless you have a request before the council, and I have given you permission to speak.
Item three point one is a request for Saint Mary's Strawberry Festival in Sinclair Park on Sunday, June twelfth. Move approval of that request.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? George?
I would like to make an amendment that Councilwoman Michelle Alexander buy us all chicken tickets for that, because that's her home parish, so.
Well worth the donation, George.
You didn't get a second on that amendment, so.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point two is a request by the Winona ORC to hold the Starlight Stroll on November fourth. Make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item three point three is a request for the Winona Health Think Pink Color Dash to be held on October eighth. Make a motion to approve that, a license agreement in the closure of the Parks Avenue during the duration of the walk-run.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Is Catrice Sisson here? Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point four is an appointment to the Human Rights Commission of Candace Augustine. Make a motion to approve that, a request.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Under new business, item five point one is the 2022 Sidewalk Replacement Project, City Manager's Recommendation.
Move to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from George, a second from Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Item five point two is the 2022 Sidewalk Replacement Project Feasibility of Report and Resolution Ordering Hearing.
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution ordering a public hearing for Monday, June sixth. Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point three is the Minda Request for a Master Partnership Contract.
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from George. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, could I get Engineering to just, just explain this to us just a little bit, so I can just get a little bit of the background, the, maybe the brief version, and help me understand what we're doing here?
So this is a contract with Minda, basically just to allow us to negotiate other contracts with them for any special testing, any special construction inspection, stuff like that, stuff that we couldn't handle on our own.
Governance the relationship and the, the contract back and forth. It facilitates being able to work with them. This is an, an annual renewal?
Uh, this is a five-year contract.
Five-year?
Yep.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Ryan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point four is a request to the Fine Arts Commission to repeal the Fine Arts Commission Ordinance.
I'd make a motion to introduce the ordinance to repeal the Fine Arts Commission and authorize the mayor to appoint a task force to study the formation of a new commission. Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion?
Does anyone from the Fine Arts want to touch on this a little bit?
We have Carrie Frederick here, the Fine Arts Chair.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Carrie.
So the commission kind of came to a conclusion after many meetings, after we adopted, or council adopted, the Arts and Culture Strategic Plan a few months ago, and we've kind of been trying to decide where to start, uh, because it's a big plan. And one of the most feasible things, so we thought, was, uh, one of the items, which is, I believe in your packets, to kind of reconstitute the Fine Arts Commission as the Creative Winona Commission, and we felt that, um, per the plan, the right thing to do would be to kind of start fresh, and that means inviting everyone that is kind of outlined in that plan, not just the people who are already on the Fine Arts Commission. So this task force would hopefully recruit those people, a wide range of people, and kind of be able to kind of put that vision together and get things rolling.
Cool. Thank you for your work. Any other questions, George?
Yeah, uh, thank you as well for your work. Uh, as I look at item one point two, a lot of these things that I believe your commission is already doing, not?
Uh, can you expand on which item, what the one point two is, I'm sorry?
Uh, it says, you know, retain the commission's role as advisory to the city council, focus on Winona's creative sector economic development, recruit members with qualifications and experience in the arts, and things, these are some of the things I believe you're already working on.
Yeah, a lot of those things are part of the goals that we already had, but the big part of it for us was that the plan kind of expands on more, like expanding that definition of creative sector, and a lot of the people on the commission right now are, there's quite a few from higher education, there's quite a few from, um, the familiar kind of, as people would define arts groups in town, and we'd really like to broaden that. That means the culinary district that's been expanding a lot, and a few other creative sectors that aren't usually seen. So we're hoping to kind of start with some new eyes, some new visions, some new goals, and let that group take this next step forward.
Very good. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Carrie.
Well, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is there a timeline on this as to when all this will come back to us, or Chad?
Uh, Mayor and council, we would, um, ask the mayor to form a task force at the next meeting in June, and then at that time, um, we would set a timeline for the work to be done to come back to council for review, and prior to that, we of course would like staff review, and because it's ordinance, city attorney review as well before it comes back to the council. So I anticipate it, you know, likely being a summer project for this group, uh, to complete that task.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, George. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point five is the Community Center Public Safety Building Presentation.
Uh, we'll have City Manager Chad who will start us off.
Uh, Mayor and council, several staff tonight are going to present, uh, to follow up on the BKV ISG feasibility study that you saw at the last council meeting. Uh, they're here to answer some of the unanswered questions that arose from the last presentation, and then you're, you're certainly going to hear, um, some advocacy as well, um, especially from the park rec department. Um, it's been a while since really this council's heard from, uh, the recreation department about the services that we provide at the rec center uh, and elsewhere. Um, you will also hear new information tonight. Uh, from the last time that BKV presented, they have, uh, put together some visuals for us, they've put together some cost estimates, although preliminary, they, they've updated their, uh, cost estimates. You're going to see some, uh, blocking images like you did, uh, at the previous meeting. Community Development is going to present as well, um, primarily because of zoning issues and concerns that I think we have addressed that relate to central fire station and east rec. Um, and of course, uh, police and fire are going to, uh, present again new information and information that you may have heard before, but just as a refresher. At the end of the presentation, I'll come back on and we'll discuss, uh, the next steps. So with that, uh, Chief Williams is going to, uh, begin the presentation.
Mayor and council, um, first I'd like to say I'm have to take back the, uh, comment of, uh, you save the best for last, but, um, maybe Chief Biddle will argue with me on that aspect of it, so. Uh, Community Center Public Safety Building from the law enforcement standpoint. Currently, the city of Winona leases space at the law enforcement center, and we do not own the building or the land. Current annual payment is approximately a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and this is based on the previous five-year average. However, I'd like to point out that our lease for 2020, the payment was a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and ten dollars, and for 2021, it was a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars, which obviously indicates an upward trend as we are moving forward. The lease was initially drafted on May eleventh of nineteen seventy-nine for twenty-five years. The lease is subsequently renewed for ten-year increments with the next renewal set for May eleventh of 2024. Shared costs with the current building included in the lease are repairs to heating, ventilating, air conditioning, and electrical systems. Boiler replacement would probably run about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that. With the current construction of the new Winona County Jail, there was no new space allocated for the police or the sheriff's departments. Due to construction, the remodel of the LEC has now come into question. The initial estimate that was done was to demolish the jail and build the new first and second floor on an existing basement structure. If you can see the overlay here of this, uh, first slide, you can kind of see the existing current law enforcement center, uh, with the bird's eye view of it, I guess would be the, the proper terminology. Uh, the courthouse is located over here, current law enforcement center is located here, parking is located here. With the new construction of the jail, and again, I want to reiterate the fact that this is a jail only, there is no allocation for space for, uh, police or the sheriff's office with the exception of the, uh, construction of a dispatch center in the old jail. So if you look at the overlay, you can see these hash-marked areas. Those are areas that will now be encompassed by the brand-new jail facility. These areas are existing locations that will still remain. The initial discussion for the remodel was to, basically, this is the current second floor of the law enforcement center where we are currently housed. They were going to take the roof off and remodel this entire section of the existing old jail. With that, the estimate was going to be four point six million dollars. They were also considering the remodel of the existing facility with the basement, first and second floor to be remodeled. That estimate was placed at three point nine million dollars. The cost estimate to do the demolition of the old jail in order to prepare for the addition was estimated to be seventy-five thousand dollars. The total cost of the project then would be estimated to come in at about eight point six million dollars. Since the construction of the new jail, this option, while possible, is not feasible. Dispatch had to be relocated into a section of the old jail. Attempting to add a second floor with dispatch located in the old jail, instruction of the new jail makes any type of addition or remodel to the old jail very problematic and very expensive. An option is to remodel the current law enforcement center without adding any additional space. So currently, the twenty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one square feet would remain, and the remodel cost low end would be five point two million dollars and an estimated high-end price of six point two million dollars. Again, that's just remodeling the basement, first and second floor with no additional space for police or the sheriff's department. The prices were calculated on an escalation of one year out, so for 2023, prices include construction and design as well as furnishings and fixtures. The city would continue to rent. However, this, would this include a new formula to cover the cost of that remodeling? Would the remodel cost be shared based on the current formula of forty-five percent paid by the county and fifty-five percent paid by the city? Once again, we still do not own the building or the land, and we are investing in a property that is not owned by the city, and again, no additional space. This is a conceptual drawing of what the new jail will look like with the current law enforcement center. The only connection to the current law enforcement center is right here, which is referred to as the jail link. Access would be through these doors, then into the facility. Employees of the law enforcement center from Police Farm would then access the elevator, either take the elevator or the stairs to the second level of the law enforcement center. As you can see, parking is significantly, uh, decreased in this, um, as many of these are reserved for public as well as, um, uh, handicap parking.
Chief, real quick, Chad, that would include courthouse, parking, county, and PD, city PD?
Yes, that would be considered public parking. Um, the current, or the former lot before the jail started, um, had, I believe, close to seventy parking stalls. I believe this reduces it down to approximately thirty, which again is then public, open to the public courthouse employees, jail employees, law enforcement center employees.
Okay, thank you.
Current operational needs. Currently, there is no garage or any type of covered parking for police vehicles. Police Department currently has twenty-four vehicles. These cars would require surface parking if no underground parking garage was constructed. Of those twenty-four cars, twelve of them are marked patrol vehicles. Values of these cars can approach one hundred thousand dollars once they are fully equipped. Equipment located within the cars is subject to extreme temperatures. They contain cameras, in-car cameras, laptops, medical supplies, radios, less lethal options. An underground parking garage allows for tempered areas to perform minor squad maintenance and also provides environmental, uh, stability for the equipment within the vehicles. An underground garage provides controlled environment for processing larger items such as cars, motorcycles, and other large items. Provides concealment for officers who may be undertaking tactical operations. It provides storage for speed monitoring equipment as well as emergency signage, K-9 equipment storage, as well as a kennel. Several other city departments have vehicles stored inside: central garage, fire, water, sewer, and park maintenance. Some exceptions to this would be engineering and inspections due to their limited space. Earlier, I referenced flow as it relates to the current law enforcement center. The current parking of squads is an example of the poor flow that we are currently encountering at the law enforcement center. Officers collect evidence on the street, such as controlled substances, weapons, clothing, alcohol, et cetera, currently bring those items into the law enforcement center via the main entrance to the law enforcement center, up the public stairway or the public elevator, through the public lobby into the secure area of the law enforcement center and to the evidence processing slash packaging area. Evidence is then placed in a temporary locker, and then the evidence investigator removes the property and transfers it again, out the same hallway, through the same lobby, down the same public stairs or elevator into the basement storage location. Once the new jail is completed, the process will be slightly different, with officers bringing the items in through the north door to the law enforcement center, through the employee area, into the evidence room, packaging area, and then once again, the evidence is moved either through the public areas or back down through the back stairway into the final resting place of the evidence, uh, location in the basement. An underground storage garage would provide for direct access from the garage through a pass-through. Officers would bring the items in through their squad into the garage, out of the car, and through a pass-through, uh, storage locker, which then is emptied in the actual evidence room itself. Our current evidence room does not meet processing or safety requirements and is extremely undersized. We currently do not have a fuming chamber for processing latent fingerprints, which utilizes super glue to help enhance those fingerprints. We don't have ventilation hoods available for testing of controlled substances that have been confirmed by the BCA recently to contain fentanyl or possibly carfentanil. If these substances are ingested, it causes respiratory distress, leading to cardiac arrest and possibly death. In an attempt to help avoid those items, we have, uh, requested two officers be present when testing is taken place and that Narcan be readily available to administer to the officers if there is accidental exposure to the substance. There is currently no washout area of any type if an officer has accidental spillage of any type of, uh, contaminants onto their clothing or skin, and there are no eyewash stations for first aid. We do not have a drying station for blood-soaked clothing or other items of evidence. We don't have stainless steel surfaces for ease of cleaning, poor lighting for pictures for evidentiary purposes. Evidence must be moved two floors to final storage location in the basement, which has a potential of seepage during flooding. Water leakage from floor drain to the secure garages located above the evidence room is also another concern. Our evidence room is too small and lacks counter space for processing and packaging of evidence. Public access. The police department is located on the second floor of the law enforcement center and accesses via stairs or elevator. No security cameras are located in the elevator. While there is a camera in the staircase leading to the lobby, the line of sight for employees seeing individuals coming around the corner is extremely poor. Administrative staff is located behind non-protective glass and partition. Bathrooms are not ADA compliant. Lack of security and confidentiality has always been a concern. There's a single door that allows access from public lobby space into the secure area of the police department. Currently, we have a conference room that is located within the secure area of the police department that is also serving as a workspace for our officers. The conference room is used to bring crime victims in to speak privately. However, their conversations can be heard by administrative staff or others walking through that area, and the same can be said that individuals in the conference room can also hear individuals in the administrative staff area and could possibly hear confidential or sensitive information from that secure area of the police department. Prisoners are brought up from the jail inside the secure area of the police department for interviews. The interview room is severely undersized and does not hold three people comfortably. Typically, this would consist of a suspect and two investigators. We currently have a room serving three purposes: food storage and preparation, gun cleaning solvent bath for firearms maintenance, and first aid and equipment storage area due to an overall lack of space at the law enforcement center. Once again, I will mention flow as it relates to the law enforcement center. Our current briefing room only has four workstations for officers. This room serves as the briefing room as well as the report-writing room for the officers. Shift change has officers being briefed in the same room as officers who are coming off shift, turning in their keys and storing their radios and tasers. This causes disruptions to briefing. If officers are completing reports, they are interrupted by oncoming shifts for briefing and other officers who are ending their shifts. There's no private location to perform phone calls for messages, interviews, or follow-up investigations. As I mentioned, we only have four computer workstations located in the scrub room, which caused, caused us to place two more workstations in the conference room. Our relief sergeants work from an office that also serves as a storage closet for taser materials, training materials, and surplus camery equipment and defensive tactics equipment. The locker room is over capacity as it serves the police department, sheriff's office deputies, corrections, and transport staff. Lockers are not large enough to accommodate officers' current equipment. There are no electrical outlets for plugging in radios and soon-to-be body-worn cameras, and it also severely lacks adequate ventilation. The emergency response team has additional equipment over and above patrol officers that is stored at an off-site location. The fitness room is a repurposed storage room with inadequate ventilation and lacks cardio equipment. It currently has one treadmill. The fitness center can accommodate approximately two people comfortably. There is no large training room. We currently have a training room that seats approximately fourteen to sixteen people comfortably. The room is not well-ventilated, and it lacks IT capabilities. The room is located adjacent to the mechanical room and is subject to excessive noise. In-service training requires officers to attend out-of-town training, as our current facility is not conducive to hosting courses. Required post-training is often hosted off-site at Hosinger Lodge, Sobieski Lodge, or the Armory. The public lobby is small and serves multiple purposes. Individuals who come to the LEC as victims of assaults, sex assaults, fraud, complaints, damage complaints, and individuals who are updating their predatory offender registration have this completed in the lobby. Individuals also come to pay parking tickets, get their vehicles out of impound, pick up permit to purchase cards, or have an appointment to meet with administration or an investigator are all waiting in this lobby. You could potentially have a sex assault or an internet fraud victim sitting in the lobby with a subject updating their predatory offender information while a third person is upset about having their vehicle towed and discussing this with support staff. As we are all acutely aware, current officers are retiring or resigning from law enforcement at an alarming rate. Just as concerning is the shortage of individuals choosing law enforcement as a career. One recent study indicated that there are over eight hundred openings for police officers across the state of Minnesota, and only five hundred students are graduating with a law enforcement degree. Hiring, recruitment, and retention of officers is at a critical point across the state. We need to show appreciation for our current employees and that they are valued in order to retain them, and just as important, we need to recruit new officers, and a new modern facility would be a step in that direction. So if we don't select the east rec center as a location or as a combined facility, the city would need to consider another location. A current study with BKV was done to study a combined public safety building to encompass police and fire. BKV drew a conceptual plan of, that would require a full city block. And this is in the handout, the options. And then the cost associated with that, with just a standalone, uh, law enforcement center, uh, looking at site acquisition, et cetera, would run approximately on the low range of nineteen point two six, uh, nineteen million, two hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and four dollars. four dollars, and the high end of just over twenty-two million dollars for a single standalone Are there any questions?
Anybody have any questions? We'll start with Stephen and George.
Thank you, Chief, for your outline. I appreciate the information. Some questions on costs. I want to make sure I understand this. You had said some of the last numbers that you gave were five point two million on the low end, six point two million on the high end for the remodel with no additional space. You mentioned fifty-five percent paid by the city. Is that, is that an agreement by contract? Help me with that piece.
So the agreement that was drafted back when the original joint powers agreement was taken care of is actually based on a formula that was created based on tax value and usage. I did forward that formula to Jessica for her to review to see if she understood it any better than I do. I'm not an accountant, I'm a police officer. So she said if there were questions on that, she would address it. I can also provide a copy of the current joint powers agreement to council if they would prefer to review that. It is somewhat antiquated based on the fact that it refers to twenty-five hundred dollars as a threshold for repairs to certain items.
Yeah.
I don't think they give the parking lot flowed for twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah. Follow up to that then. Rent. You said you gave several rent figures that was early in your testimony. If, if there were some sort of remodel at the current facility, do we know what rent would be estimate of what, what rent would be? Are they going to give it to us for the same dollars?
I think that is, that is probably the great unknown. Steve, we haven't entered into conversations. I've had very minimal conversation with the county as they obviously would like to know a direction so that they could plan. We have not entered into any type of discussion about the current joint powers agreement that contains the lease. One would assume that if they are going to put five million dollars into a structure that they would ask their tenants to pay an increased rent.
Okay. Thank you.
George? Yes, good presentation, Chief, very informative. So the one building for up to the twenty twenty-two standards code, everything involved could pretty much say around twenty million dollars. And that is, does that include the purchase of another site? Or is that above and beyond this twenty million?
I believe that, again, BKV pulled this together in about a week possibly. So it's, it's generalities, but they, they've used numbers for site acquisition, excavation, site prep, and again, not having a site known to them, they've just kind of used a ballpark figure, if you will.
Okay. And for the manager, is there, and maybe it's too early to ask this, I don't know, but is there any type of a federal or state funding available for a single police station building?
So Mayor and Council, we're going to address that later in the presentation.
That's fine, that's fine.
And then I would just, to follow up Chief Williams and the BKV estimates, the only thing I would caution about the nineteen million on the low range and twenty-two million in the high range is that when we look at the estimated land acquisition, again, not knowing the site, if it was not at the East Rec, those numbers, I think, may be a tad bit high. We understand the BKV would, you know, obviously send us a bit higher number not knowing, you know, the location. Yet you're going to see here in a minute that the fire standalone and land acquisition actually may be low. So we have a balance if we, if we do three separate projects. You'll see that here in a minute. But on this slide specifically, just want to note, may be a tad bit high for land acquisition.
Michelle, you have a question?
Hi, Chief Williams. I sat in on the jail advisory committee many years ago, and in the recent conversations we had with the county, and they indicated to us that the expense of remodel would be ours solely with in addition to rent. So what, what I want to know is, let's say that the option still existed that we could remodel that building, which I, I don't think it does because they've already done the footings. And I think what I understood is they can't now drop in new footings on the old building, which you'd need to add a height to gain more space. Are they going to be able to address any of the needs? Not the wants, because I don't think anything you gave to us is a want. The very real needs of your department for space, safety, and having walked someone in there, a young lady who was making a complaint about harassment, I can attest to how very uncomfortable it is to sit in a lobby where everyone's coming and going and make a formal complaint of harassment, not knowing who's coming in or going. So, I mean, are, are these remodeling plans, were they ever even going to address the needs? Because what I remember from those early conversations is that touching that building, which is built as a jail, which is not like remodeling a home with a simple wall, it was going to be more expensive, and because the structure was built as a jail, the ceilings are low, which means lifting ceilings, and then you're getting into some of the asbestos and other contaminant issues. So I thought they weren't really looking at addressing the jail itself.
So in his, his initial estimate that he provided to me that came to about that eight point six million, that was the actual rehab of the current building, the basement, first and second floor. And then the other one was the demolition of the old jail. And then to add a second floor to that, but it would be on the existing footings of the current jail. Now that they've moved dispatch in there, it'll be the functioning dispatch center will be in the old jail, and they basically have abutted the new jail up to the existing and then along the west side of it. They would not use the word impossible, but said it would make it extremely difficult because then you would have to find different areas to be able to put support pilings into the building while still maintaining a functional dispatch center. So without saying there is no way, it's a, it sounded to me as though it would be very, very expensive and probably very problematic to try and engineer and carry out that construction.
And would it address your needs? Would they have been able to address your space needs?
No.
That was, yeah, okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for Chief Williams? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just to talk a little bit about the site and neighborhood of both the central fire station and then the location of Saint Stans and the East End Rec Center. So we'll start with the current central fire property. Of course, the city purchased additional lots. Next slide, Brad, there's a picture of, there were three parcels in this Laird's Edition that were acquired back in two thousand six, seven, and eight. The intent, of course, was to, at that time, expand the fire department. It was just pre-recession. I did want to note that if this area and this block isn't used for central fire or for another purpose, the zoning in this area is R three. And R three provides for a number of different housing type options that could occur on this site. Six single family lots could be created or multifamily. So currently, the fire station is zoned R three. We have looked at different multiple housing options. If, in fact, this is moved and some of them work out quite nicely. There are nine additional properties on this site. BKV took a look at this block potentially to see what could be done. Those nine properties would have to be acquired. Of course, don't want to forget about asbestos removal and demo, which can get quite expensive too. Staff doesn't recommend this area due to the cost, A, of acquisition, demolition, and asbestos removal. But in addition to that, we heard just at the last council meeting from Bob Bamanek, the county recorder, and I think all of us know that we heard the median sale price of a house just went above two hundred thousand. We heard the stories of people looking for housing, not being able to find housing. So we do know also through our comprehensive plan update in our different subcommittees, the number one issue that seems to keep coming to the top is housing and the lack of housing in our city. So for that reason, we wouldn't recommend decreasing the supply at this time. Moving over to the next area. One more. So this shows the zoning in the, if you look at this side, if I, I don't know how to do the pointer. The point of this slide is about in the middle there in the yellow. You can see that there is the East End Rec Center and Saint Stan School and the Basilica. That's in the yellow, the R two zoning. But directly to the south, there's a B one zone. Directly to the east, there is a mixed use neighborhood zone along Mankato Avenue, and there's also an R three zone. So just within a few blocks of this area, we have four different zoning districts. So this is a slide developed by BKV. It shows a little bit about density, height, and what is in the surrounding area directly adjacent to the East End Rec Center, Saint Stan School. So we have some single family homes, but we also have a lot of duplexes, also some former commercial neighborhood buildings where maybe there was a store at one time with upper floors in housing. We have the height enassing of the Rec Center and then the new public safety building shown in the red. And if you keep moving to the right, what you'll see is it would be about massing wise similar to the Saint Stans School. And then, of course, on the end, the Basilica, which is much higher than all the other structures in the neighborhood. The next few slides that I have that we can just go through here are some different pictures we took from different angles within this neighborhood. So here you're looking at the East End Rec Center and Saint Stans. You can point right through these, Brad. So that, we do have different types of businesses and zoning, as I mentioned, in this area. Here's a two-story structure. This is the Saint Stan School and looking down Zombreau Street. There's a two-story commercial, former commercial building that we see here next to the Saint There's one more, I thought, there we go. So this is also a commercial building with potentially apartments in it as well. Yeah, there was a former cleaning service in there a long time ago. There was a restaurant in it, in there. So these are the types of neighborhood type businesses and things that we see in this particular neighborhood. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions. I will note that looking at zoning, emergency service facilities can be in all of our zones in our residential zones, and municipal administrative buildings can also be in the R zones as well, as can the public indoor rec center. So zoning is consistent with proposed future uses. There may be some performance standards that might apply, but in general, the zoning is acceptable in this district. Happy to answer any questions.
George? This building that's up here right now, I know Aaron remembers it probably, Chief Williams, that used to be the Rob Brothers Hardware Store and motorcycle sale shop and repair. So that definitely has a history of business.
You sell carpeting out of there, too.
Yes, carpeting and drapes.
Lucy, I have one question regarding the current central fire location. If that building was to be demolished, do we have any concerns about the soil? Any remediation or anything we would have to do there?
You know, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know that we've had a phase one or phase two done on that building. I will say that we have been rather successful in securing some cleanup grants when we are looking to redevelop an area. So if we did run into a situation, I believe we could put together a proposal to clean it up in order to redevelop it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions? No? Thank you, Lucy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to go back with George into history. Bear with me, the Friendship Center has a long history here. So you can go to the next slide, please. In nineteen sixty-five, and I'm giving you these, this part of history so that you can really understand why you ever even wound up with an older adult center. So in nineteen sixty-five, the Older Americans Act was enacted through Congress as well as Medicare. In general, the older adult population was living longer, and efforts were being made to have programs available for them to engage in since retirement was stretching out longer. So nineteen thirty-five would have been when social security came about. The average age at that time was sixty-two years. They got away with a lot there because we don't retire till we're sixty-five. Over the years, the older adult population has continued to grow. Life expectancy today, seventy-nine years of age. So senior centers were established across the nation. Winona jumped on this trend via the City of Winona Park Rec Department. Our first senior center director was Park Rec Director Vern Smelzer. They started in two classrooms, east and west, traditional Winona style, with coffee pot and a card game going on. WK and Madison each had a classroom for the older adult programming. By nineteen sixty-seven, they had already outgrown the two rooms. The Red Cross at that time was located on Fifth and Huff Street. They had a few rooms to use, and the program grew to add a pool table and to have parties. Couple of years later, nineteen sixty-nine, we've outgrown it again. Valley View Tower was being built. The senior center moved to the first floor of Valley View. This was a collaboration with SEMCAC and the county, some older adult services, aging services. However, because it was a residence and not all people were understanding that it was a park rec program, people weren't feeling very welcome. If I read back in notes, there was a lot of contention. So in nineteen seventy-seven, city council named a search committee to search the best facility for a senior center. They had a point system. That criteria was square footage, interior space, the building condition, maintenance of the building, energy conservation, potential environmental effects, the area of the site, open green space, all of this sounding familiar? Parking, expansion potential, the zoning, neighborhood characteristics, public safety, proximity to downtown, transit, cost, and income potential. Fifteen sites were looked at all over the city. I can give you that. I can give you that list of those 15 sites. Numerous sites that weren't for sale were looked at as well. In 1980, they settled on the Masonic Temple, which offered 10,000 square feet. They wanted it to double in size. These are the reasons that they moved here. They both believed that they would double in size over five to 10 years, 1980. That they had the potential of 50-plus parking spaces within a half a block. It was basically in the downtown area. This allowed for a collaborative initiative with SEMCAC for congregate dining and SEMA, which is the Southeast Minnesota Area Agency on Aging, for advocacy services. Although there were safety concerns such as traffic lights, traffic flow, energy conservation, no elevator, no air conditioner, it was an older building with much maintenance for upkeep. They purchased the site for $175,000. Many of you will hear over the years that we paid a buck. It was not. It was $175,000. Remodeled for $194,000 for a grand total of $393,000. In the year 2000, in an effort to expand programs for more health and wellness, SEMCAC dining contract was dissolved and congregate dining was held at two local apartment complexes. Three years later, City Council agreed to $35,000 for equipment for the wellness center. And that program has grown over the years. In 2008, based on Activity Council from the Friendship Center coming forward requesting for more room, City Council hired Henry Lester and Associates for a marketing study. The conclusions from that study were significant, demographic growth. The current group are much more educated than previous generations. We're talking now 12 years ago. You know, let's just all continue on. The Boomers in particular are not accepting labels. They don't want to be called senior. The current older adult wants to continue to grow, reach out, improve, experience, and invest time in themselves. They do not consider themselves on the edge of the community. They consider themselves invested in community. And in this study, the current structure was unworkable. Based on the growth of the programs being implemented at the center and the consumers' interest in the Friendship Center, in 2010 was the first time that we applied for our first national accreditation. We, along with Rochester and Fairbault, were the second senior centers in Minnesota to have accreditation. Accreditation is five years. In 2016, we were the only Minnesota senior center as well as in 2021. I might add here that in 2016, our peer reviewer stated that we deserved much more than what we were getting. We were a Hotel Hilton program residing in the Days Inn. We remain the only senior center in the state of Minnesota that holds national accreditation through the National Council on Aging National Institute of Senior Centers. In 2015, a community center group began discussions. It was a collaborative group of agencies, HCO, WSU, Hiawatha Valley Mental Health Center, Winona Area Public Schools, ORC. HCO, ORC, Hiawatha Valley were all looking for ways to extend offerings as their demographics were growing older and the staff base was diminishing, looking for ways to broaden the services. During those discussions, YMCA was in the throes of a capital campaign. They offered to network. Focus groups and surveys indicated lack of interest from the members of the Friendship Center. City staff were also finding it confusing to settle on a governance agreement for that collaborative effort. Before I pass this along for the programming, I would like to just state that somehow in all of this discussion, we seem to have lost sight of the Friendship Center and the older adults in planning. We've been trying to remove ourselves from the corner of Fifth and Main since the 1990s for numerous reasons. We conducted a study in 2008. We've designed and developed a community center since 2018 with ISG. We're residing in a building that is not conducive to the programs we offer. There still is no room to grow. There still is no parking. The traffic has increased and will continue to increase on a major highway. We've removed precious handicap parking spots for bus stops. It's an old building that does not have office spaces that allow for mobility devices to enter those offices. The air quality is not efficient or appropriate to the numbers of people or the programs that we offer. It seems the time is now for the community to build a center for all residents to utilize. Older adults can remain living in the community. Side note, 5% of population actually live and reside in long-term care. 95% continue living in the community. So for as long as possible with recreational activities and opportunities available to them. The demographic is continuing to age and grow and live longer. I'm requesting that you really seriously think of building for the future, a future that projects into 2050, maybe I'll be 95, where average life expectancy will be 100 years. Thanks.
Thank you, Malia. Does anybody have any questions? Michelle.
Malia, thank you. I, for one, really appreciated the history. I've only been here for a small part of it, so I appreciate that. I also appreciate the patience that the seniors have approached this because I understand how frustrating it must be as we struggle through trying to figure out how to get this building built. And I'm hoping that when they looked at that Say the Art building, that we want to encompass them into it, that it was pleasing to them. I heard from a few of them that they liked the plan. But I just, I don't, I want to know, we didn't forget the seniors or the Friendship Center, however they want to be referred to.
The older adults.
The older adults, older Americans. We have not forgotten. This is one way I think we're able to get what we need for them by combining the projects, which opens up that federal and state dollars for us. And I think, and then we're going to get a better building that's there now. I mean, I know some people love that building. It served its purpose, but I wouldn't call it attractive. And I think starting fresh and getting a whole new 2050 building is maybe a good way to go. But thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Councilman Alexander.
Sure. Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Laura Holberg. I'm the Recreation Director of Services. In my previous role prior to moving into the one I'm currently in, I was the Recreation Coordinator in charge of programming at the Friendship Center as well as community gardens. So tonight, I'm going to give an overview of the programs and the facility and how we use that space at our current location. Programming at the Friendship Center has continuously increased, just as it was expected to do so. As Malia mentioned, what started as a single meeting has grown into a massive variety of programs that are now available at the facility we operate out of. This includes group fitness classes, educational programming, social opportunities, clubs, and a lot more. The programs at the Friendship Center have been strained for a long time. The strain has limited the number of programs we're able to offer and the amount of people we are able to serve out of our space. Currently, if we wish to offer a program for more than 16 people, we only have one room available to us. That room, however, is not enclosed. So any program occurring in there is subject to patrons moving through the facility, other services going on, staff talking on the phone to clients, a patron taking a personal call in the entrance, and equipment being used in the Wellness Center. If our program requires room with privacy or some noise barriers, we only have one option, and that's our back lounge, which is shared by programs, staff holding meetings, and advocates needing a private meeting space for more than one client. All other program spaces in our current facility are walk-through rooms, meaning that if we have a program occurring in our computer lab where the superintendent of schools is answering questions or hosting a conversation, the group will face constant interruptions from folks coming in and out of the exit, patrons passing through to use other rooms, users in the Jabahut enjoying conversation, and whatever noise from programs occurring in the main room at that time. Despite our extreme limitations, staff have been really creative and we have grown our services and programming. However, as programs grow, we are faced with making the choice of moving our programs outside of our facility or limiting the number of folks that can access a program at a given time. A good example of this is our partnership with Winona State and Bridges Health Clinic. This free weekly community health clinic started in one small room in the back of our Friendship Center. It quickly expanded to using four of our five spaces on a weekly basis. At that point, we made the choice to move the program to the East Recreation Center, where we could continue to grow, increase visibility, and increase intergenerational access to a program that's really amazing. However, due to the limitations of that facility, including accessibility, inadequate bathroom facilities, lack of private meeting space for students to work with clients, the program was again forced to relocate to a separate facility. In a community center, this service could be accessible, have increased visibility, and can expand program offerings to do more than it currently offers and serve more people in more ways. Again, staff are creative and we can utilize various facilities and buildings around town to provide services. However, we are limited in our capacity to provide services in this way. Some programs are currently at capacity and cannot be relocated, such as our Active Wellness Center, that can only accommodate six people per hour in that space. Some programs are able to relocate to other facilities. However, this does require additional staffing to oversee the program, provide program setup and teardown, ensure safety, and general customer service and building maintenance. Relocating programs also creates access barriers for patrons with limited or lacking transportation. It means the patrons lose the ability to come to one location for multiple programs or may be forced to choose between a service and a program they wish to access. It also minimizes an important component of a community center, the opportunity to socialize, mingle, and meet new people. If you stop by the Friendship Center or the Rec, you'll notice that people drop in for a program and they stay to socialize with each other and staff. A community center with appropriate spaces would allow for programs to grow within that space. Next slide. We often get questions from a programmatic standpoint about how the programs at the Friendship Center and the Rec would be housed in the same facility. I won't go too much into detail, but we wanted to provide an example of a schedule. So we created schedules based on three different times of year because we know that depending on the time of year, the programs we offer are different and the users are different. And what we, and we just want to give it a visual of that. What we continuously comes up with our current spaces is lack of appropriate space for the programs we offer. In a community center, the spaces would be appropriate for the programs we provide. It would also have sufficient sound barriers so that an advocate would be able to meet with a family to discuss resources at the same time that the U Group, U Group or Drumline is practicing in the gym or an activity room. Our current facilities limit the opportunities that we hope to continuously expand. And you can flip through the next couple. They're just some examples of some program schedules based on time of year. The other thing to note is with those program schedules, this is, this is all the programs that we currently offer out of both facilities able to fit into one community center concept based on the previous designs from the previous study.
Laura, real quick, do you see different, well, I'm assuming you do, but is it busier, like, let's say, in the winter or summer? Or do you see a pattern with the programming?
Yeah, we definitely, as a programmer, you definitely kind of cater the type of program you're offering to the type of year. In the summer, we have a lot more programs that are occurring outside. And so we kind of shift what types of programs we're offering in the summer in the space. And then in the winter, we have a lot more indoor fitness class, classes that people are wanting to access. So we kind of ramp up that, those programs from that standpoint as well. Of course, from the East Recreation Center standpoint, that gym space, that preschool space in the winter and colder months are really important to the community and the users, that kids and families have a place to take their little ones to run around and play in a gym or a place that's, that works for them. And so they're not competing with other programs happening.
Thank you.
Lastly, we wanted to touch on the current location of the Friendship Center. As Malia mentioned, the Friendship Center is currently located on the fifth corner of Fifth and Main downtown on a major highway that is continuously experiencing an increase in traffic. It also has a continuous shrinking of parking availability to patrons and they're often forced to walk several blocks across Highway 43 to access the building. In extreme cold, heat, rain, winter months, a lot of our users are frankly unable to access our facility. Any person that does access the space is asked to walk up a sloped entry and a lot of these users have a wheelchair, a walker, or other device. A center that is easily accessible with appropriate programming spaces is essential in providing continued support and services to the community that we serve. Any questions that I can answer?
Steve? I guess I'd have a comment. Thank you very much for your, your presentation. I toured your facility with Malia maybe a year ago or so. And I just can't see much of a future in the, in the facility that you're in now. I was amazed at how much you're accomplishing in the really cramped space that you have, to say nothing of parking and entryway. And yeah, on my tour with Malia, we're going through, going, going through rooms. They're walk-through rooms. You can't, can't run a program that way. So I, I mean, I, I get it. So, thank you.
Michelle.
I appreciate that you put together uses of the new facility because I know that prior to this particular discussion, some of the concerns from the community were, how would you program two very active programs in a similar, in the same building? And it really is helpful to see it laid out that way. I don't know how you keep track of it all.
Outlook calendar.
Fair use. I wish that worked for me, but it doesn't. And I really, building off what Steve said, I mean, the Boomers are like the backbone of our volunteer base and our community organizations. And without them, we would struggle to get some of the best things about our city accomplished from the volunteers at the Great River Shakespeare Festival to HCO musicals and so on. So I definitely think getting a program in place that'll benefit not only families, but our older generation is vital. So thank you for doing that for us, though.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
I like you, George.
Eileen, did you have something?
I didn't want to jump the gun, Laura. Are you going to talk about the community gardens still? Okay. I didn't want to comment on the shared spaces. I think that this was something that we talked about when the sort of community center focus group that was at the Friendship Center was investigating where the Friendship Center could possibly move and what would be viable. And it was a hard sell to say we could combine all of these things, but I think we know that that's something that many communities do across the country. So that, and, and we know the benefits of intergenerational interactions. So I, that's, that's never been in doubt for me. And, but I'm really grateful that you illustrated it so clearly. Thanks.
Aaron, did you have something? Okay, very good.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Laura.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Marie Tay Olmstead. I'm one of the senior advocates at the Winona Friendship Center. As a senior advocate, Lori Paulson and myself provide information, application assistance, referrals, Medicare counseling, and many other services to older adults and their, and their caregivers in Winona County. Our services are very well-needed in our community. And if we stay in our current space, there are some continued difficulties that our clients have, will face. So for example, we have, Lori Paulson and I are very grateful that we do have office spaces, but they are very small. To have a one-on-one visit even, especially during the pandemic, is a little too close for comfort sometimes. And especially if someone would like a caregiver or a companion to participate in that meeting with them or we want to have a family visit with that person. There's really just no space in our office. And as Laura had mentioned earlier, the only space that we do have that would be allowed for a closed door is our back room, which is a highly coveted place with all of our other programming that's occurring. It's difficult to maneuver mobility devices within our offices. For example, I had an older gentleman in my office today in an electric wheelchair. And even with removing one of the chairs that's in my office, it was a very tight squeeze for him to be able to come in and leave my office without bumping into everything. There's limited space to spread out paperwork. A lot of times, we are There's limited space to spread out paperwork. A lot of times we are talking about Medicare. We are filling out county applications that require so many. Different proofs of information and there's just no space to spread out all of that information. Which can be kind of confusing when you're trying to make sure all of your ducks are in a row to make sure that the person you're assisting. Will qualify and has all the proofs that they need for the waiver or medical assistance that they're applying for. There is also lack of appropriate spaces at our current location, especially, um, as we talked about earlier in regards to parking. We have very few handicap spaces, um, and especially during winter when our clients are navigating with walkers, wheelchairs, canes and just. Several of our clients have decreased mobility, hiking over snowbanks, walking over big puddles, going across traffic. Across Broadway is just not ideal. Some opportunities that we would have in a new space. If we could stay within the community center, it is wonderful to have advocates available, um, and accessible where our older adults gather. We have so many people that just pop in to say hi, to ask a question, um, to get information. And it's a really great opportunity for us to build a relationship and rapport with our clients. So that they know that if anything happens that they can come to us and we will help them figure it out. It would give us an opportunity to create some additional private meeting spaces for groups. Um, and have that ability to spread out. Um, and hopefully provide us some increased accessible parking to reduce some physical barriers. Just an example of how busy we are, um, in 2021, we served four hundred seventy-three unduplicated clients. Meaning that we served four hundred seventy-three individuals, not counted more than once. Um, and we provided eight hundred eighty-two office visits over 2021. We do also provide home visits, but a majority. Of our, um, chats with our clients are in our office.
And that was just for senior advocacy?
Correct.
Yep, okay.
Any questions?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marie Tay.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Lori Paulson. I am the other senior advocate at the Friendship Center. And part of our, um, role in the community is the dementia friendly community. And so with that involves programming. And so we are also programming along with, um, Laura and her team to, for space, competing for space. Some of the impacts if we were to remain at the Friendship Center would be small beanie places. We meet in the back lounge because that has a smart TV. And as our petition, participation is continuing to grow, we are getting, um, outgrowing that space. If we were to go into our main room, which has a projector and a, and a large screen similar to what you're seeing here. Again, it's noisy. There are people walking through and prone to interruptions. Um, when you're working with people that have dementia, interruptions and, um, outside noise is not great when they're trying to concentrate and participate. So opportunities at the new, um, center would be larger program spaces that would eliminate that noise. Increased accessibility, talking about like, um, with mobility devices and also the intergenerational opportunities. Maybe like bus buddies or having kids come join for the memory cafe or sing in our choir with us. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Ally Mayer. I'm one of the Recreation Coordinators in the Park and Recreation Department. And I oversee programs and services at the Aquatic Center and the East Rec Center. The East Recreation Center is unique for the fact that it is a drop-in center. Participants are not necessarily coming to the facility for one specific program. But have options for a variety of creative and free play activities. Since reopening in June of twenty twenty-one, staff have been facilitating structured activities each day. Staying true to the drop-in concept, activities are planned in advance by staff, but participants have. At the ERC can choose participate in the activities offered or continue with their free play activities. Activities offered by staff have ranged from hands-on STEM activities, wellness-focused activities, crafts and much more. All activities are free of charge to all and provide additional options for participants each day. East Recreation Center is open and free of charge to all members of the community. And although the majority of our daily users are youth, they are not the only members of the community to use the facility. Adult programming also has a large footprint at the East Recreation Center. Activities for adults include drop-in gym as well as league play. Drop-in gym for adults, two nights a week are dedicated to open volleyball and open pickleball. Volleyball leagues includes co-rec, men's and women's. Volleyball leagues run during the fall, winter and spring and usually have two courts at the East Recreation Center and one to, two courts in the Saint Stan's Gym. Most of these nights, Mondays and Mondays through Wednesdays, there are games played from seven PM to ten PM. In addition, this past winter, our adult basketball league was also played at the East Rec Center and Saint Stan's Gym. Currently, the only space at the East Rec Center. Uh, that would support small group programs is our back studio room. That is the only room in our space that has a door that closes. Closes that we could do our small group programming and the space is limited in size and number of participants that would be able to fit in the space. And that is also used as our quiet study room or take a break if we just need to step away from all the noise that's in the gym or the game room. Most of our activities that we currently facilitate happen in our gym or our large game room space. So a community center that would have two gyms and additional square footage would be huge for our programmings. Programs as they continue to grow. So I have some numbers for all of you tonight. In twenty nineteen, our daily check-ins for the entire year. Nine thousand three hundred and thirty-four check-ins. In twenty twenty, January, February and part of March, three thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine check-ins. Twenty twenty-one, June through December. Eight thousand twenty-five check-ins. Twenty twenty-two, January to April, five thousand six hundred and thirty-eight check-ins. What is not reflected in those numbers is while we were closed during the pandemic, staff created twenty unique. Different take-home kits and handed out over five hundred kits to members of the community. So a community center, Laura touched on this earlier, adequate space. Based on usage, there has been an increase in the need to provide services and programs and appropriate adequate spaces to provide them in.
Any questions for Ally?
George? Yeah, thank you, Ally. Very good report, uh, from, uh, hearing your report that. We could use a lot more square footage down there as well to accommodate all the users.
Yes.
And it's just not youth, it's youth, it's older adults, middle age, it's teenagers, everyone, correct?
It is everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ally? Thanks, Ally. Appreciate it.
Uh, Mayor and Council, back again. Um, I'm going to talk a little bit about the community gardens now. So the community gardens have been a great resource and programmatic component to the Parks and Rec Department. From volunteer opportunities for people of all ages to a place for fun, community events and education. The gardens are an enriching service to the community. And the proposed option for the location of the community center. Although the programmatic space of the facility increases by two thousand square feet, the footprint of the garden shrinks significantly. Um, although there is potential for a small-scale pollinator or educational garden, the space does not accommodate for the multiple rented plots that currently exist at the East Rec Center. There is currently a task force designated to finding additional locations for gardens. And we also recently hired a staff person who's, has a component of their job is to oversee the garden programming at the East Recreation Center or in the community. Staff recognize the importance and the value that this service provides the community. And we're committed to making sure that we find a new location or multiple locations within the community. And with this project is sustained ongoing and it is part of the community center project. Any garden questions I can answer?
Eileen?
So as of right now, if the plan, the last iteration of the. BKV plan we saw went forward, there is not currently an alternative place for the community garden plots to go.
Um, the, the task force, the CEQC, I think, believe task force has proposed a few sites, none of which have been settled on or, um, selected officially. But with this community center project, I think it's important to note that that would be a component that we would need to make sure that that project has a place to go or places to go.
How, uh, important for programming in the rec center or community center? How important is it that those spaces are, uh, abutting or adjacent?
To the, the facility?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, the majority of the plots, the existing community garden are rented out. We do utilize, uh, volunteers and, um, we do do some right now, very small-scale pollinator education. So it would be, I would say, important to the users of the space that there is some form of community garden space, whether it's pollinators or educational garden programming. That something exists on that location that we can do, um, cooking classes with pollinator programming with, um, or just. Giving people the opportunity to be in a garden space and interact with plants and all that good stuff. Cool, thank you.
Mayor and Council, I would just add Laura answered that excellent, but one, one addition and it would be more of a suggestion from a, a staff level. It's why I interrupted. A concept would be that if this project moves forward that we would. That, that one recommendation would be to align item out, community gardens. So if, if the traditional plots that Laura has suggested aren't at that location, that that be part of the full budget project if they go some. If they're at a different location was chosen. Because a new location would require some funding. To establish, maybe perhaps create a water source, et cetera. And so a concept would be a line item. In the total project, community garden, relocation, establishment, something to that effect.
Michelle?
Um, and remind me, uh, Scott, that part of that plan was to actually look at implementing more community gardens throughout the whole community as well, right? So if I, for instance, live in a specific neighborhood and there's community space there and I wanted to rent a plot and it didn't need to be at the East Rec Center. There could potentially be coming online, community gardens throughout the whole city. That we could start with three, but maybe if people wanted to volunteer to add another, we, we'd have that opportunity. That's what that group was doing, correct?
Yeah.
Mayor and Council, that's correct. And then to that point, I'll ask Laura just to briefly touch on. Some mobile units that we have to address what you're talking about.
Yeah. So the city, um, they were donated to the Park and Rec Department has, uh, raised bed movable garden plots. They are, um, they have a water reservoir, so they don't. The dependency on a water source at that location is less, so that makes it a little bit easier to find a better space for them. But they are something that we have that we could put in different locations around the community. Um, in different neighborhoods that would like access to community garden spaces and don't always have a water access.
Thanks, Laura.
George, uh, Mayor, as you and I talked here probably last year, I mean, community gardens were a very, very big thing in this community. I mean, they were large. There were some down on Shive Road. And I believe somewhere the current Fleet Farm building sits that also was a community garden. So, uh, yeah, it's not uncommon to have them in this community.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Brad. Patrick Menton, Recreation Facilities Director. Mayor and Council, I'm here to give a brief overview of the current and proposed outdoor amenities at the East Rec Center. And also a little bit about the bones of the building. So the current East Rec lot is sectioned into four quarters. A quarter of the lots, the building. A quarter, as Laura mentioned, is the community garden. A quarter of the lot is a natural play space that has, uh, wooden climbing structure. There's a dirt mound with a slide on it, a gaga pit. A swing set. And then this photo. Which appears to be taken by the perseverance rover is. It's not the surface of Mars, but it is, uh, the final quarter of the lot showing this badly worn sport court. Uh, and the court is, the asphalt is breaking down to the point that each year we have the street crew show up with a street sweeper. To pull up the debris from there. The kids deserve more, the, the adults deserve more, the older adults, the community, everyone deserves, deserves better. So the proposed outdoor amenities at the East Rec and in the neighborhood. So the new design drawing does scale back the available outdoor space. However, onsite amenities could still include some small amount of outdoor recreational space. So it could be a small hardcore. With a basketball hoop, uh, it could be garden features, uh, could be a pollinator demonstration area. So there is still some space onsite, but it is less. So because of the reduced amount of onsite usable outdoor space, we propose adding upgrades to neighboring east end parks. This would have a net positive result to park users and the community. As there'd be more amenities spread across a wider surface area than just that one location alone. So the first proposed location would be Lions Park. It's located next to the Bud King Ice Arena. It's four tenths of a mile from the East Rec. It's a seven-minute walk. Uh, Lions Park currently has a playground equipment that does not meet code. It has two T-ball fields. So what we would do is we would talk with neighbors in the community to see what they envision to be in the space. But it could be a new inclusive playground equipment, could be enhanced ball fields. Uh, maybe an entrance to the, to the future river trail could be a home to community gardens. So another park that we propose updating is Sobieski Park. Sobieski is six tenths of a mile from the East Recreation Center. And we would again work with the neighbors, but consider replacing. Another section of badly worn courts. We could replace them with potentially pickleball, it could be basketball, it could be tennis, whatever the neighbors come up with. Uh, we would look to upgrading some of the play equipment that's on the site. For example, the swing set. Could get brought up to code. We'd like to make the park accessible for all abilities and all users, again with community input. Next slide, Brad. So the existing East Rec Center building state of affairs, this is the bones on it. Approximately twenty percent of the current indoor space is not usable for programming. So what the public doesn't see is that there are two large locker rooms located just behind, adjacent to the restrooms. That are, that are really only usable for storage. They're not suitable for programming. But up top on the roof, the roof is installed in nineteen ninety. Fifteen years later, it was coded in two thousand and five. Uh, the warranty expired five years later in two thousand and ten. So this roof has outlived its life expectancy by twelve years. The HVAC, the three rooftop units, um, WHV recommends that we budget for new units soon. Because a life expectancy is typically fifteen to twenty years on these units. So RTUs, the rooftop units, number one and two were replaced in two thousand and fourteen. So they will be due in seven years. Uh, however, RTU three was done in two thousand and nine, so that should be replaced in two years. Last part I want to mention is that the two thousand and eighteen Comprehensive Parks Plan recommended. A thorough ADA study of the East Rec Center because, um, under today's code, this building cannot be rebuilt. Any questions?
Michelle?
Thank you, Patrick. I was telling to my councilmate, Eileen, how much I appreciated hearing from so many members of the staff that we rarely get to see. To hear the work that you do and, and the role that you play and how important it is to the community. I, I really like the idea of including some improvement to some of our other facilities. Particularly Sobieski, since we just spent all this money in partnership with the community to build this wonderful pavilion. But then you go out to the pickleball courts and there's giant holes in there. It'd be nice to have a complete system there that's an easy distance from here that could make up, you know, from the East Rec that could make up some of the lost outdoor space. I would just ask that when we're looking at this, maybe we also include a way to, uh, provide marketing to the community. I think there's a lot of untapped. Recreation space that people are unaware that we even have. So maybe as part of this project, we have a really great recovered basketball court. Right down on Broadway, very close to where they are, that is heavily used by the community, basketball day and night there. Right across from St. Martin's School, they use that as well. And I just think there's lots of ways we could maybe incorporate all this park into some type of plan to. Introduce to the community our, our, our fantastic park programming. Um, I, I'm surprised at how often people have lived here for a really long time or completely unfamiliar with. What you can do down at Bud King Ice Arena besides ice skate. I mean, it might even be an ideal location for some community garden. They get great sunlight there and we have water. So I mean, I really appreciate this. I think it would be invaluable to include some of these in whatever budgeting we do for. For a new build of any sort because, um, it would certainly be a way to complete those projects and a. I, I'd also like to see if we can get the Sobieski baseball in there.
Yep. Thank you. Yeah, these hard courts are really important to the community. We tend to call them hard courts. A lot of people think of them just as a basketball court, but it's so much more than that. I mean, you'll see four-year-olds learning how to ride their bikes for the first time without training wheels. Um, you'll see the Little Warriors Drum Line will be in the. You'll see the Little Warriors drum line will be on the outside practicing. I mean, it's it's very valuable for so many more things than just basketball.
Well, and you say pickleball, and I can tell you from, my older brother is a competitive pickleball player. And I, he has indicated to me multiple times that the city had outdoor space, they would host championship games here, which I I try, strive to understand this sport and the attention it gets from our older generations. But I mean, it's, they're rabid about it, but we don't have very good, you know, courts and they can't, from what I understand, they can't be ones that are convertible because you have, there's certain shots they take. I don't know. But I mean, I think it'd be phenomenal to have a pickleball court down at Sobieski.
Agreed.
George? Chad, I know there was some conversation a while back, and you were involved in it. I touched a little bit on it. Is there any progress that we could report as far as any donations for Sobieski Park?
So Mayor and Council, Councilman Borzakowski has indicated, through Councilman Borzakowski, myself, we we have reached out to a private donor to inquire about some hard court improvements at the Sobieski Pavilion. We have, we have not heard back to date, but I can certainly follow up with them.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Patrick?
No.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mayor and Council, throughout this process, I I think you all are aware, location, 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 absolute key for the fire department. I've, you know, also mentioned and brought up the typical lifespan of fire stations, roughly 50 years. And it's a little bit more than just wear and tear on the building. So I'd kind of like to utilize Malia's, let's walk in the past theory here and take you back to 1955. George, I'm not sure if you're a twinkle in an eye somewhere.
Two years old.
Two years old. I I was told by an assistant chief or deputy chief that that was Chief Williams' rookie year at the police department. He had that comment, so. 1955. The current central fire station was being built. The the building plans revolved around staffing. The current design of the station was was revolved around the staffing at the time and and what the fire department provided. So just history-wise, back in 1955, that station was designed for 10 24/7 firefighters living at it, including administration. So, and along those lines, the only responsibility that fire department provided for the city was fire suppression. The station reflects it, the way it was built. Now, yep, there's wear and tear, but going forward, fast forward to today, everything has changed, and that's typically respective of why fire departments need to be replaced within a 50-year span. Currently, your fire department, we have three 24/7 firefighters living in the station. We still house administration. But unlike 1955, where they were running 280 calls a year, Central Fire and West Fire are running about 2,400 plus calls a year. And your current firefighters are not only responsible for fire suppression, but we we deal with confined space, hazmat, high-level rescue, low-level rescue, swift water rescue, all an ice wall, which most departments throughout the state don't have to deal with. So all those disciplines require equipment. And, you know, we've, we've made some cosmetic changes to the building to address needs and lack of bedroom space. And we, so we've done the best we could with the building cosmetically, but we just don't have the space on the apparatus floor. And there's literally been nothing done construction-wise or renovation-wise to that building since 1955. We have air conditioners hanging out windows, no elevators. I believe on the slide, we we apparatus, fire trucks have literally increased in size and length by a quarter and by a half for engines and aerial trucks. And that's basically just due to the model back in 1955, where you have a ton of guys with the ability to pull with a bunch of trucks, where now we had bigger trucks trying to throw all the necessary equipment on to meet what we're doing today. So things have changed. Probably the most important thing on the list here that that's really kind of popped up in the last five years is the cancer risk. I don't know how many 30-year-old or 30-year-old males we have in here, but your 30-year-old males at the fire station are actually seven times more likely to end up with testicular cancer. And it's it's basically nothing more than what we're asking them to do daily. So we have to address the cancer issue. Next, ISO, I'm sorry. Along those lines, location, location, location. And this is another tidbit of information. The West Fire Station was actually built in 1939. It's been in service for that long. What building was there prior to West Fire?
Do not know.
He's my go-to guy here. So it was actually the old Jefferson School. So the foundation in the basement is actually the old Jefferson School. The the one unique thing about West Fire Station is our prior city council couldn't have picked a better place to put the West Station, which is absolutely the key. And with the number of studies that we've done, there's not a better location for the West Fire Station than where it currently sits. We did do a major renovation in 1989, and we did a second major renovation to the West Fire Station in 2015 to accommodate the aerial truck. In regards to ISO and location, 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 the city of Winona is blessed to have a ISO rating of two. There's a, it benefits residential, very small, but commercial, they're saving a lot of money. And part of the reason for us reaching that ISO rating back in 2017, 18 was the placement of a 75-foot aerial truck at the West Fire Station. And that allows us, under ISO regulations or guidelines, we have to get a engine on scene within 240 seconds and an aerial truck on scene with within 560 seconds. So having a response policy that coordinates between the two stations allowed us to meet those criteria, which got us to an ISO two. So you can see the importance of location, location, location. If not, the public safety building, we need to figure out a location. And and we need to address the concerns that the fire department currently has. Currently, BKV just did the the combined public safety building over the last seven months. So separate newer current locations would require allocation of non-budgeted funds to continue the study. Based off of our past pre-council meeting, BKV came up with a scenario based off of what you requested to to utilize the actual footprint that the fire station is on. What you're looking at is a single-story fire station at our current location, and it would involve a removal of nine houses. The second option is a two-story option, and we would, going two stories up, we'd be able to keep, I believe, was it four? Four residential areas. So I I know that was a concern and a request from council two weeks ago. So BKV did come up with that, and they also provided some numbers on what we were looking at cost-wise. And I'm gonna just go to the bottom because I forgot my glasses. So we were looking at it on the low range, about 15.6, and on the higher range, 18.9. And that's with us currently owning a vast majority of that block. So if you have any questions, I am more than happy to answer them.
Michelle?
Chief, is it safe to say that the current building needs to be demolished?
In in, so the construction of the building is hollow core block with a brick veneer. Sadly, in the the winter, I watched the gas meters spin, and during the summer, I watched the electrical box. It it is an eco-unfriendly building, and it was built in the 1950s, and it's exactly the way it was the day it was built. I I I think if you were to do, and just using the West Fire Station as an example, we had a renovation in 89 and then a second renovation in 2015. So we got 20, 20-some odd years out of that renovation. If we didn't do a thorough, replace the electrical, replace, financially, I think we're just better off demoing the building. I I, we're gonna be putting good money at a bad building, if I if I could use that analogy.
That's what I thought. I mean, I remember when you brought this to us, man, was it 10 years ago, with some of the minor improvements we needed to make at that time, which was a lot of windows and HVAC systems. And we weren't even into the cancer concerns and the feasibility of these bigger vehicles being stored in there. So whatever we're looking at, that location or another, we're talking about a new build.
I I I would recommend that.
Okay.
And I, just to plug out for the fire guys, they've been doing our roofing for the last six, seven years, and they've been taking care of a lot of the internal workings of the building. And I I, it was more just for the simple fact that I didn't want to put any money into the building just because we were in the CIP for so long, but we need to do something with the building.
Well, you didn't really even touch on like the accessibility issues or the lack of, like, I think you've had to carry people up two flights of stairs for awards because they were in a wheelchair. I mean, there's a lot of other issues with that building beyond the efficiency of it. It's not at all accessible for, if you had a mixed grouping of female, male.
There is no ADA compliance. There are no elevators.
There's no hot zone, no cold zone.
It's a 1955 building that wouldn't meet one standard. If we were to put a renovation in, exceeding a certain amount of money, we'd be putting lots and lots of money to get it up to code.
And it's not sprinkled. I was gonna say, all you came around and made us all sprinkle our buildings downtown.
Yeah, it's tough for us to try to enforce that and then come back to a building that's not sprinkled.
Well, which is not safe either.
Correct.
I also assume that part of the problem with this building is if you had continued doing the exact same thing, which was simply fire suppression, some of the issues we have maybe wouldn't have cropped up like they did. But I think your role, as you suggested, is far and away beyond just fire suppression. Your paramedics, your first responders, your hazmat and hazardous material people, which is, I think, where some of that concern comes from, the that having a hot zone where they can decontaminate, shower and move into clean environment is vital.
And 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 really, just to take it a step farther with the cancer issues, what you're seeing with new facilities, they actually use negative air pressure, positive air pressure to launder turnout gear, just to minimize the exposure risk that that's causing the cancer. It would be near impossible to to configure something within the current layout of our current station to to meet any of those requirements. It would be impossible.
I have one more question, if it's okay. Does this new budget incorporate some type of updated motorcraft for the water, by any chance?
You're in charge of that.
Just kidding. I think that's been in the CIP for 15 years. I'm just wondering.
Any other questions? George?
I just want, Chief, and I guess probably for a police department as well, too. We do have female officers. As of yet, we do not have a female firefighter, but I would imagine in the future, we're probably going to see some. Are both buildings, how are they to accommodate the females?
Fire station-wise, we we did do some cosmetic arrangements up on the second floor. So we do have a dedicated female restroom and a shower upstairs. Down in the watchroom, we we have one of the flippy things, male, female. But we would, in the next 50 years, we will have females, you know, on the fire department. We've attempted to promote that with flyers and everything else. Just to this point, we just haven't had a candidate yet. But it, we will absolutely have a full-time female firefighter in the next 50 years. Absolutely.
And Chief Williams, how how are the females accommodated in the current building right now?
Currently, there's restrooms for male and female, as well as locker rooms for males and females.
Okay.
Any questions for Chief Biddle? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mayor and Council, next steps. Typically, in a project of this size, you would typically go into a process that's considered schematic design. And that that would be pretty standard if it was a facility or location that the city owned. And again, you were taking the steps to continue that that project. With this project, we feel that there's a few more steps that need to be addressed or considered. However, we would still recommend to continue to explore the East Recreation Center location. The steps that are involved in that process are to begin discussions with the parish regarding Saint Stan's property. So with that, I want to just clarify one thing that we've been discussing with the Saint Stan's property. The Saint Stan's Parish owns Saint Stan's School. And the control of that school, then, in in a sense, if it was to be sold, the diocese at that point needs to also approve the sale. But we would, it is under ownership of the parish, so just wanted to clarify that. We we would suggest that some direction to begin discussions with the parish regarding the Saint Stan's property. We'd like to continue to explore funding options, so some direction to meet with local representatives, look at some historical bonding and bring that information back to you. If, Brad, if you could just flip to the next slide for a second. The reason why I bring up the local state representative discussion and historical state bonding is the council alluded to it the last pre-council about, well, what would be an estimate cost if we had three separate locations? And how does that, how do three separate locations impact funding? Well, one, of course, is total project cost. The second is whether or not historic state bonding or local representatives could help us with state funding if these buildings were separated. So that is a bit of an unknown. But you can see from the outline here that the piece that we didn't get to tonight is that the community center, if it was standalone, has increased in cost. And, sorry, it's hard for me to see it with all the lights, but you're okay, Brad. So the total estimate with a standalone community project, thank you, low range is 12.3 million, high range is 13.5. So that piece we did not get to tonight. Well, until now. If you take then the piece that, the other pieces that we mentioned tonight with standalone police, standalone fire, you have a low range, if we did three separate projects, of 47.2 million and a high range of 54.7 million. And that is a difference of anywhere between 8.9 and $12 million, based on the Of anywhere between eight point nine and twelve million dollars, based on the previous findings of a combined. Public safety and community center project. So one thing that we wanna clear and clear up on these next steps is. You know, does historical state bonding look at three separate projects? Now, we would. Know based on the the staff information, again, of historical state bonding is. The likelihood of three standalone projects to get state funding is very unlikely. Uh in some ways, we think the community center may actually qualify if it um is used as an emergency facility. Emergency in the sense of. It was converted to a pandemic site. Uh it has been converted in emergency situations for hot and cold situations, meaning. Uh during polar vortex a few years ago, we had a power outage on the west end. East Rec was quickly activated into a site in case uh power was not restored and. Cold weather, we had ability to have a center open for the public, same concept for heat. The concept for state funding in a public combined building, though, is really related to its regional significance in that training component. And that's really what historically state bonding has has funded. Um so we do have some concerns uh there. Certainly, this council has indicated to staff that um. Uh desire to establish public input sessions. Um and so we would recommend that that be incorporated in the next steps. I would note that uh if the council. Uh doesn't want to continue to explore the East Rec Center location that. It was mentioned in the presentation a few times that. We we did not budget for that and we did not, that's not what the feasibility study with B K V or I S G would cover. So we would need to enter into a new agreement with B K V or I S G. And we would need to allocate non-budgeted funds to further that that study. Um but again, we're recommending that we continue to explore the East Rec site location. Chad, if you have any questions. Be happy to address them.
George?
No, thank you. Uh. As we move on from here, we are looking at a new police, fire, east rec and community center. We're looking at those four components. So the east rec would be replaced with a new east rec center.
Mayor and Council, that's correct.
Thank you.
So. Going off of what George said, the reason that this uh estimate for the community center has increased is because. This is for a new standalone bill, because our the original proposal. That we got from I S G was a renovation in addition to the current um building. Is that correct?
Mayor and Council, that's correct. So we had B K V I S G do a quick estimate. Um increasing two thousand square feet. And then the increase from when that last budget was produced. It went from. I think we were at seven and a half million at the last time we looked at. Original community center concept that has increased to that twelve to. Again, I can't see it very well.
Twelve, three.
Yeah, twelve, three on the low end.
Okay, so. We have transitioned from a couple of years ago when we were uh working with I S G. On updating, doing a community center. From a lower price point to now having a demolishing. The current center, building a new one that also has less outdoor space and paying more for it.
We've gone from a renovated east rec in addition. With outdoors. The rest of the current block renovated for outdoor space. To if we did a standalone at east rec, this price includes demolishing existing east rec. Building new two gym. Additional two thousand square foot building. But the only caveat I would say is that that did not include then the green. Sorry, it includes the updated green space. So you're adding additional green space because there's no other facilities there. This is just the standalone. Uh facility.
I think I understand that.
But be so sorry, let me say that one more in a different way. Uh what you saw in the presentation was B K V's. Um estimates for standalone police, standalone fire. At the end of the presentation, we showed. If we're back to just east east rec, that that would be the current price. Not, I guess it's incorrect to say that that would be less green space because there would be no other facilities there. We would recommend same green space as the original proposed. Drawing.
Okay, I think I understand that. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanna make sure I understand the numbers here on on the screen that we have, the very last numbers. The difference is eight point nine million and twelve point three million on on the low end and and the high end. That that is the difference in that that eight point nine million and then twelve point three million would would be the. Extra cost, the increased cost if if we were to build these separate facilities, that that's that's. Extra above and beyond than if we did the the combination of. Fire, police, community center, and rec center, by understanding that. Correctly.
Mayor and Council, that's correct.
Most likely, it would it would be fair to say there's some uncertainty and 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 squishiness in land acquisition and land acquisition cost. With uh a fire and and a separate location for police as well. That's that would be quite uncertain.
So Mayor and Council, as I mentioned during the. Uh police only slide, I think we were concerned about the land acquisition number being a bit too high. Um we feel fire may be a little bit low. Um so I guess those costs, yes, I would consider those variable. Uh where you see the significant savings, again, I think B K V mentioned this is. You're typically gonna let this under one contract, one general. Uh inflationary rates, uh you're gonna see some increase in demo and site. Uh prep at three different locations. On the conservative side, if you took out the land acquisition, we're looking at a. You know, roughly a five point nine or six million to ten million. Increase if you just simply took out the acquisition. Amounts.
Thank you.
I was gonna ask a question, but actually I think I would just make a motion so we can just have actual discussion about uh of direction. So I would make a motion that staff. Continue discussions or begin discussions again with the Saint Stan's Parish for. The potential of purchasing the building and attached land. That we would set up public input sessions at a variety of locations, including online. And that you would continue to work with B K V and I S G on a contract moving forward so that if we come to a point where we're ready to decide, we know what the cost would be. What their phase two study would look like and so on, so that we're ready to move because it's a pretty tight tight line. And that um we have this plan for the input done before the next meeting so that people. That wanna make comments have that opportunity to start doing so immediately. And there was one other thing. Can you go back one more slide? Sorry. And continue to work with state and federal governments for funding options. Sorry, I can't remember what that was.
Mayor, I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Michelle, a second from Aaron.
So Chad, I think, I mean, I've sat through quite a few of these meetings with you and some with uh Steve Sarvi. And George, while we met with some of our uh elected officials, and I got a very strong sense that what you indicated is correct. If it's not a group project. And I say group project because if we're not all working together to build a campus or a facility. The chance of getting bond dollars or certainly for applying for the federal nine eleven dollars is gone. I also think the additional issue would be even if they would consider giving us bond dollars for three separate projects. We would then also be tasked with coming up with a bigger share portion of what that bond dollar would look like. And we'd have to have a pretty good rationale um for why we're doing them separately when we explored. Concurrent. And even if we're just looking at moving the police and fire, where I don't know, because although the police can be anywhere, the fire cannot. And I think this was the only location that was a better I S O rating than where they currently are, and I certainly would not advocate for removing nine houses. Even if we could do it, we would never forcibly take them. And I think adding more houses to. The current market situation is of benefit instead of reducing, certainly since we have a good relationship with Habitat for Humanity. I also um think that this gives us a golden opportunity to work with some of I H R Ed to maybe work on. Advanced training for fire and police and maybe encourage some of our younger citizens to consider a career in one of these. These paths. And I do know that hiring is a bit of an issue at both locations, probably given the situation they work in. And I'm very uncomfortable with both of their health risks. So I think this I is a very good project. I think. Before we can vote, though, we need to have those few questions answered. If Saint Stan's is gonna sell for two million. We we just move on so that we need to have those questions answered so that we we can have a clear path forward. I mean, that would make it simple from that perspective at least. Thank you.
Eileen, did you have something?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um I. I I think we obviously need more information. Um and I'm. Especially keen to hear more from the public now that we have a lot more information out to the public about costs and things like that. It's very clear to me that um all of these, all three of these um pieces of our city need new facilities. All of our facilities are currently um insufficient or in some cases just unsafe. Um I really don't have a problem with putting a fire um in the proposed block um or near the rec center. I would prefer not to tear down the rec center and take away all the outdoor space. I really don't like that. Um and uh I I am. Not, I I'm really uncomfortable with the idea of having a place where we are bringing in. Um you know, the the chief mentioned that the current, you know, lobby area of the police station, you possibly have offenders and. Coming into the lobby on victims and things like that. And I'm really uncomfortable with all of that happening, right where there are children playing. Outside, I I just don't, I'm not convinced that that is the best option. Um so I will support the motion in favor of getting more information, but. You know, we represented the option of combining all this because that's what we asked B K V to do. Um and so it's. We we just don't know what the other possibilities are. I do, I do completely understand why fire needs to be there, and I'm perfectly comfortable with that. The fire station's already in a neighborhood. There are um a custom to going in and out, but currently the police station is. Located in a downtown area where there is not a lot of residents around. Um living there, and I have concerns about moving the police station to a very residential area. I know that it has some commercial pieces, but there's a lot more. Family activity happening, so I am still not convinced that a combined option is the best option.
Mayor, I just wanna comment that that keep in mind that we're not taking prisoners at that police center. That's not the jail. That is not the jail, and I want public to understand that that that's not the jail. It's a garage. It's not a jail.
Thank you, Eileen. Thank you, Aaron. Steve?
Yeah, good presentation tonight. Um I I see three, three things are standing out to me. One. Our our staff made uh an excellent presentation that that we need some updates to our facilities. That's crystal clear. We've got uh numerous facilities that are out of date. And have uh hit their life expectancy and need need to be replaced. I think we settled on a location. Uh it's it's clear that 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 location. Uh is is the especially the place to be for fire, which is is critical. And I make it, I think it makes sense to locate the other facilities there as well. Uh finally, cost, uh certainly cost will continue to come into focus. But uh there's there's at least some initial convincing numbers I'm seeing on the screen here. That that would indicate that uh the costs align as well. Uh I think it's especially true that we will attract more state bonding dollars, which are a critical component component of this. When we build these facilities together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. George?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh good presentation, yes, by everyone. And the as the project continues to move forward wherever we go, I think a big piece of it is Saint Stan's School. Uh you know, if that perhaps does not come available. Uh you know, that could, you know, put a twist into it, but as Aaron said, the police department is not a jail. It's the administration offices and for uh the officers that check in. Uh fires down there as well, too. They're not gonna, their their response time is good. But what I like about the whole plan is that we are going to get a new community center and a new rec center. And to get them all to work together. I think I think it will work and we'll. We'll see where everything rolls out as we go, as we go down the down the path here. So and like I said, there's a lot of work to do. At at the earliest, what would we see? Two thousand twenty four? At the earliest, Chad?
Mayor and Council, before we. Theoretically see a shovel in the ground, uh the the very earliest would be two thousand twenty four, the earliest.
The earliest could be twenty five, or all we know are twenty six.
Especially depending upon that state bonding. And then. Again, likely the city would need to bond as well, so even to pair that, it's likely twenty twenty four, twenty. Twenty twenty four would be really. Aggressive schedule.
Right, so. Yeah, thanks, everyone, for uh for all your information tonight. It's very, very helpful hearing from, as I say, from the other departments, so I'll. Even how community development plays into it. So there's a lot of pieces yet to go yet, so. I thank you.
Thanks, George. I I think um. The the best way to convey this. Is that regardless of what we do, this is not an easy decision. When you look at all of it. Whether it's separated, whether it's together. Regardless of who we're listening to or not. This is an expensive project. Potentially the largest project ever in the history of the city of Winona. It is a contentious issue. And it's not taken lightly by the people sitting at this table. Nor the people of this community. And I think it's extremely important. That everyone understand. That as we're going through this process. These are. The cards we've been dealt. We could have talked about a fire station ten years ago. We could have talked about different pieces of land. We could have talked about different cost factors in the past. But ultimately, we are the ones who are here now, and we are the ones who have to make this decision. And I. While I haven't spoken with all of council, I can say I have looked at this from all aspects. And I I have had discussions with a couple council members. And it's a difficult decision for all of us. It's gonna be difficult for the community. It's gonna be a long process. But I think all of us here are doing our best to make the right decision for the community as a whole. And we all need to remember that along the way here. Is there any other discussion? George?
Yeah, Mayor, just to add on that too, as far as uh the fire service goes, uh you know, back X amount of years ago. We did invest, chief, in a lot of equipment. I mean, those ladder trucks are a million dollars. And and we invested in squad cars, in uh in ladder trucks and pumper trucks. Uh we did put a lot of money into equipment and for training of that equipment, so.
Very good.
Uh Mayor and Council, I guess, Mayor, before you read the or call the question, just to clarify for staff. The motion alluded to. Related to the next council meeting, and I just wanna make sure I'm clear on.
The only thing I wanted for the next council meeting is when we would have the public input sessions, where they would be and what times. I mean, the rest will take time, but that piece I I wanna get if I wanna get it out to the public as as quickly as possible so we can begin. Taking input. I mean, we all are taking input, but to make it more formal. That was the only part.
Steve, you had another comment?
Can we have the motion read to us?
Do you want me to just do it again?
The motion was basically the page that says next steps. So it is to continue to explore the East Rec Center location, begin discussions with Saint Stan's on the. Uh school, building and property. Continue to explore funding options for state bonding. Establish public input sessions with the plan for that to be presented at the next meeting. And that was it. Oh.
Continue with I S G. Continue with ISG and BKV.
Yes, that was, continue exploring what that contract would look like for a phase two. So we know the cost and what they would accomplish.
Alright.
Not to present it, just to have it in the works.
Okay, and we had a motion from Michelle, a second from George. Aaron, I'm sorry, no further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
We'll start with Councilmember Worszkowski.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Ryan, Hamilton Street Railroad Crossing. I have to bring that up every meeting, Hamilton Street Railroad Crossing. I've been serving on the city council now for 23 and a half years. And having these positions at this table are an honor and a privilege. There are honor and a privilege where we are elected by our wards and there's no higher honor than being elected by the people. These jobs here are a privilege. Mayor, you said it tonight, every one of us up here, regardless of how we go, how we vote, we take these decisions very, very seriously. It affects a lot of people. Serving in office for, for all those years, you hear about streets and alleys. You hear about parks, you hear about drainage, you hear about neighborhood issues, you hear about drug houses, you hear about budgets, LGA, which every one of us, every day, I know our manager does. We are constantly looking to keep our funding for LGA up. And of course, we're also looking that we're able to have people keep their yards up. These are all tough decisions, all tough challenges. I don't think there's any one of us at this table in our management team can by the end of the day say, you know, everything is really going good. Boy, there's not, money's coming from all over, everything is really going good. There's no challenges, there's nothing. Well, there are many, many challenges. I had the opportunity, like I say, our honor and privilege to serve the residents of the fourth ward. Tomorrow is election filing day and I will be re-filing tomorrow for the folks from the fourth ward for their trust and confidence to continue on to support them, bring their voice to this council table. I will be filing tomorrow morning at 8:30 AM, thank you.
George, I thought you were retiring for a second there, the way you started off, alrighty.
Just one more thing, Mayor, just to acknowledge the passing of, of George Benedict. George, who taught in education for many years in Austin and he was a very, very proud Vietnam veteran. He received many medals, many accommodations for his service. I believe he was, he was called in twice to serve during the Vietnam conflict. To his wife Patty and his children, my condolences on the passing of father, husband, grandfather George. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, George. Councilmember Alexander?
First, I want to say Happy Memorial Day and thank you to the families and men and women that have served our country, allowing people like George and all of us to serve, to be a member of a, of a great community, a great country that allows us to have the freedom to represent each other and to make these votes and to do it publicly. Much like George, although I don't have a, a pretty speech planned, I will say that for the last 13 and a half years, it has been an honor and privilege to sit here. I've worked with three different mayors and four different managers and a variety of different council people. And I can say that without exception, this has been one of the best council rooms to be in. We are polite and friendly to each other, we get along, we joke or jovial even when we disagree. And there have some been humdingers of disagreement from Fraxan to Broadway to, I'm sure, this news station that we're talking about. But somehow we always come together as a council and as a community to make the best outcome possible. And so at 8:31, I will also be filing to run again in, in 2024, I guess for 2023. I'm skipping a year here. And then also thank you for this, to the staff for these presentations. I think invaluable information shared with the community and with us, it helps us to make decisions when we have the most relevant information. Sometimes different people have different information at this table. And when we all have the same facts to work with, it certainly makes it easier to, to go out into the community and have the conversations we need to have, thanks.
Thank you, Michelle, Councilmember Mueller.
It's almost past my bedtime, so nothing for me.
Yes, I think that is the longest council agenda item ever. Councilmember Young?
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rupinsky?
Not much, you're on. I just want to say congratulations to Theodore Do, Mississippi and their performance this past weekend at Holzinger Lodge. They did an excellent job and keep up the good work, so thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda, there are three items. Approval of the minutes from the May 2nd council meeting and the final adoption of an ordinance to amend the Human Rights Commission membership and an ordinance to transfer property to the Port Authority.
Move approval of the consent agenda, second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Time being 8:45 and there being no further business to come before this council, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion from Michelle, second from George, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Very good.
Appreciate it, staff, thank you for being here.